Council meeting, they will let our staff know and then we'll move on from there. So if you could just be patient with us for one second, we'll get right to what we're all here for.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our committee. Oh, I got it back. Okay. So good morning, everyone, and welcome. Welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for today, January first, 2024. It's a very short agenda before we go on with our ceremony. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Alexander.
Good morning, Mayor and Council and City of Peekskill. First up, we have the designation of the city official newspaper. And so Section 20 of the Municipal Home Rule Law prescribes a five-day newspaper notice period for a public hearing on a local law. Legal notice in an official newspaper five days prior to the hearing date is generally accepted, but maybe longer according to other applicable state statutes. The Westchester Journal News publishes daily and outlines their deadlines for submission. Most public hearing notices must be posted by Wednesday to adhere to the five-day publication requirement rule. According to the charter, only one official newspaper is needed. The Westchester Hispano will be used as supplemental newspaper as needed. Their paper publishes once a week on Fridays. And we would like to move this item. Please note that we are adding language to the resolution.
The language we'll be adding is that Peekskill will continue using the Westchester Spanio as a supplemental newspaper period.
Okay, so if the council is okay?
Good.
Okay, next up, also, we have a proposed list of banks for city council approval in 2024. The following are the banks we currently use in operations or may do business with in 2024. I recommend that the city continue to use the list below in 2024 and have them included in the resolution for the official banks for the City of Peekskill. Wells Fargo Bank, JP Morgan Chase, Orange Bank and Trust, PCSB Signature Bank, Webster National Bank, TD Bank, M&amp;T, Capital One, Cogent, and New York Liquid Asset Fund. Please note that Capital One and Cogent are added to the list because of leases that we have. So we also hold money in those accounts because of the lease, the capital leases that we have. So that is the slight difference from last year. Staff recommends that you pass this resolution when presented. And we also have an order of precedence, and this is going to be a verbal presentation by our clerk.
Good morning, everyone. So the order of precedence will be established on today once we move into our resolutions. And we will follow the same order of precedence that we used as of last year. We will declare that Deputy Patricia Riley will be our Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilwoman Talbot, followed by Councilman Fernandez, followed by our Councilwoman, I mean, excuse me, Councilman Brian Fassett, I mean, Councilman Rob Scott, followed by Councilman Douglas, and lastly, Councilman Fassett. Thank you. You want? All right, I went back and I took you out, yes.
Madam clerk, can I just clarify?
Sure.
It should be Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Talbot, Councilman Fernandez,
Fernandez.
Councilman Douglas, Councilman Scott, and then Fassett.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? In essence of time, I'm going to ask the council that we could dispense, please, with ways on reports, concerns, and issues until our next committee of the whole meeting.
All in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to assign resolutions. So if the Deputy Mayor would do Resolution One, Councilwoman Talbot Resolution Two, and Councilman Fernandez, please Resolution Three.
All agreed? Okay.
All right, at this time, I call. You okay? I call for a motion to close this meeting. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much. This concludes our committee of the whole meeting. Now on to the good stuff.
Mayor, Council, I'd like to ask if you would gather in the hallway to come in as a procession, and we'll gather the city singers around the podium to mark the entrance of the Mayor and Council. So just an order of business right now, if there's anybody who wants or needs a mask, we do have windows open to improve circulation. There has been an increase in the number of infections. We do have extra masks here for you. We don't have any reason to believe that the level of infection will cause most people serious harm, but we do want to be conscious of whether or not you need a mask. So please feel free to come see me or somebody in the back if you need a mask. Did I have the city singers?
No.
So this is the time when I announce some noted attendees, and I think it's appropriate that David Mauricio from the school district be acknowledged and thanked for the participation of the Peekskill High School City Singers. Thank you so much. So we also have Mayor Sean Patterson Howard from Mount Vernon, our sister city, Assemblywoman Dana Levinberg, Deputy County Executive Ken Jenkins. We have former Mayors of Peekskill, Mary Foster and Andre Rainey, former Councilman Joe Shooter, Portland Town Supervisor Dr. Richard Becker, former Councilwoman Mary Beth McGowan, Rafi Silverberg from Congressman Lawler's Office, Councilmen Rob Mays and Jim Crichton from Town of Portland, Pam Hallman Johnson from the Peekskill School Board, Colin Smith, County Legislature, Drew Plaxton, past Councilwoman. So this is a time of resolutions for, and I have Keisha Stewart. Oh, I'm sorry, Priscilla Augustine from the NAACP. I want to acknowledge you too as well. And of course Cynthia Knox from CHOP. Before I go on for other introductions, I also want to say what a special place I've come to find the City of Peekskill. And I think that's most been shown to me in terms of what's been going on with CHOP. You know, I sat through my first many meetings with the council, listening to the people of the City of Peekskill who have been attracted to come to the City of Peekskill. And they said things like, I moved to Peekskill because Peekskill is a city where people care about people. And I just thought that was very special, and I see that every day. I also see that every day exhibited from the staff from the City of Peekskill. And I just want to tell you how hard I know that they work for the city. I'm just going to first acknowledge our department heads who are here. Cassandra Redd, our City Clerk. Hardworking, all of our department heads are hardworking. Jonathan Zamora from the Nutrition Center. Michael Hartman, our Acting Corporation Counsel. Chief Jim Seymour, Fire Department. Chief Leo Duluski, Police Department. Have I missed any department heads? Tony, so, oh, I'm sorry, Controller Tony Tracy, who snuck in here. We have a lot of city staff who are just as hardworking and more numbers than I could call out right now, but I would like to acknowledge our Fire Department and other staff that is here with us today. I'd also like you to remember that this is the home, the literal home of our Fire Department. And we want to thank them for allowing us this opportunity to showcase this great location and use this for this ceremony today. And also, we are blessed with many volunteers in the City of Peekskill who do so much good work for the city. So if you are on a volunteer board, would you please stand at this time just to allow people to see what great volunteers that we have throughout the city? So I will say that I looked at the presentation from two years ago, and I got to watch Mayor Andre Rainey lead this ceremony and your heart act to follow. But I tend to be more factual, but I just want to say how much I appreciate having started in the city with you as mayor. Okay, we've got some business to do today in this meeting. And so before we get started, I'm just going to establish the way we're going to do business today. So we are going to have some speaking, and then we're going to follow that with the oath of office. And I just want to remind all of you who are coming to take this serious oath for the City of Peekskill, that when you walk up to take the oath, that you should stop at the mark, the yellow mark here, face this direction, and have the person, your spouse or whoever else has been designated to be the person giving you the oath, stand directly in front of you. There will be a microphone there for you, and there's also a script that we can use. So just look my way if you have any questions when you get up to the spot, and we'll be ready to help take care of you. So at this point, I would like to ask Reverend James Perry if he could approach the podium. Yes. So we have. Okay, Reverend Campbell, please thank you for your service to Peekskill. And please leave us in your discretion.
Let us pray. Most gracious and eternal Father, first of all, we just want to thank you for the privilege to be in 2024. We thank you for the honor to be servants in this your town of Peekskill. And we pray, oh God, that you be with us as we go forth in this ceremony. We can't invite you here because we can't invite you into a place that you already reside. But we can ask that you would entune our hearts, minds, and our spirits, that we will acknowledge and be with you as we go forth. We ask this in all other blessings, in the mighty, masterless, and marvelous name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Campbell. We appreciate you. At this time, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would also like to ask Bria, the artist, if she could come forward. So I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then have you sing the National Anthem for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Thank you.
And that is Peekskill spirit. Thank you very much, Bria, the artist, for your wonderful rendition of the National Anthem. We are very privileged to have great representation in the City of Peekskill. And we have with us Deputy County Executive Ken Jenkins and Assemblywoman Dana Levinberg, who have asked to speak for this event, and we have asked to speak for this event. And I'd like to ask Deputy County Executive Ken Jenkins if he could approach.
All right, good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. It's a privilege to be here with you this morning, certainly on behalf of my friend, County Executive George Lattiba. My other friend, who I walked past his parking lot this morning, County Legislature Colin Smith. It's a privilege to be here with you this morning for the inauguration of Mayor McKenzie and certainly the reelections of Kathy Talbot and Patricia Riley and my good brother, the Judge Reginald Johnson, right? So let's give it up for all of them one more time. It is a privilege because on this great day where the sun is shining, and the sun always shines in Peekskill, right? And whether it's at the train station, you're hanging out with anyone in the morning, or doing the work that we have to do, the continued work that this outstanding Peekskill team, led with your mayor and all of the council members, continue to do for, not only for Westchester County, but for, as it was just noted by the city manager, to talk about the Peekskill welcoming and how everyone is not only welcomed here in the City of Peekskill, but everyone works together to move everyone and lift all the boats together. So all I'm here to do is to say congratulations again on this wonderful day. And as you move forward in continued success, and you know all of us in the county will continue to be with you with whatever we need to do to help Peekskill advance and succeed. So congratulations to everyone today, and may God be with the City of Peekskill and with all of our elected officials today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy County Executive Ken Jenkins, for those words of encouragement. Dana Levinberg, our Assemblywoman, would you please?
Thank you so much, Matt. And I'm going to also just give a little shout out to Brian Fassett, also reelected. Yay. Thank you so much for the opportunity again. Happy New Year to everybody. It is such a privilege and an honor to be here before you, be here in the City of Peekskill. So, so many friends here in the audience, you're all my friends. I just have been so blessed to represent Peekskill. This is obviously the end of my first year of my first term as Assembly Member. And I can't say enough about Peekskill and this incredible board and judge and all of the volunteers and all of the leaders in this. You're all leaders. I mean, I'm just looking out into the audience, and I can't even believe it. What I have noted here is incredible partnerships. And again, you see your friends from Portland here and obviously, you know, all these other groups. But I've just seen incredible partnerships among all of the groups in Peekskill. You're always there for your veterans, you're there for your seniors, you're there for your youth, for your students. We have Superintendent Mauricio here, you know, again, always, always, I see all of you here. You all come out for everybody. And as you know, you talked about being welcoming. I just think Peekskill has the biggest heart. I love coming up here for so many things. And you guys are really, you just have heart. You're looking out for everybody from the bottom up and every day. And obviously, we need to make sure that we have success with our shelter here. We're not going to let that fail. We're there for you, Cynthia, we're there for all of the people who come here. Everybody reaches out their hand to help another every single day. I couldn't be more blessed to represent you with this outstanding board and council. I am so privileged. I'm just wishing you all the best because you can see what the heart has brought in terms of all of the accomplishments and all of the development and all of the different organizations. And you guys have gotten lots of money here from the state. I know that I was able to bring in some money for you, but I'm not the only one. I know Senator Harkman brought a lot of money in here. I know Sandy Galiff before me brought money and the county, and it just keeps coming. And it's following the love, it's following all the good work. So congratulations again. And I'm sorry that I'm going to have to leave before you get all inaugurated, but you already had your first meeting, so what the heck? You guys are good. You're solid. Congratulations. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Assemblywoman Levinberg. I would like to say, following up on what the Assemblywoman said, that Peekskill is much more than its civic leaders. It is also its nonprofit and community leaders. And we have so many of you in the audience right now who have done so much good work and continue to do so much good work. And I'd like to ask if you're affiliated with a nonprofit or a community group, would you please take a stand for all of us to commemorate, to? And some of our community members are very reserved and shy about what they have done. But I see many of you out there who have done so much for Peekskill, and I just want to say that it is appreciated and that it leads the City of Peekskill in getting things accomplished for the city. We thank you for that. We also have a New Year's greeting from Reverend Campbell, and I'd like to ask if you could approach podium.
Good morning. I'm the other Reverend Campbell. I'm the Francis Campbell, Francis spelled with an E and not an I. First, let me say, last night was my first time ever attending a ball dropping. Peekskill, I tell you, we did our thing last night. The ball dropping, the fireworks, everybody was on one accord. And I truly, and along with my husband, we enjoyed ourselves. I think we're going to get back another year. Usually, we're in church, but last night we were hanging out, so we had a great time. Anyway, back to the task. On this first day of the new year, 2024. it is my honor and a privilege to stand before you to extend New Year's greetings at the request of my sister from another mother and our most competent, intelligent, tenacious, compassionate, gracious, and no-nonsense woman who loves God, family, community. And guess what? We will not cheer her with anyone else. And her name is Mayor Vivian Mackenzie. Residents of the city of Peak Skill and friends, we are still here. We are in the land of the living. Look at your neighbor with a smile and say, "We are still here." Come on, look at your neighbor with a smile and say, "We are still here." And I believe you will agree with me, we have so much to be grateful for. Even though the world is full of brokenness, we are still here and we can make a difference as change agents. A change agent is someone who loves and doesn't discriminate, someone who extends a helping hand, someone who cares for the elderly, the veterans, and especially families with children, and someone who is willing to go the distance or the extra mile for someone else. Will you be that change agent in 2024? That's a question. Will you be that change agent in 2024? If you agree, let the church say amen. Remember, I am a preacher. As we journey into the next 366 days, for this is a leap year, I will leave you with this message a dear friend sent to me this morning. Welcome aboard flight number 2024. We are preparing for an on-time departure into the new year. Please make sure your attitude and actions are secure and locked in an upright and upbeat position. All self-destructive thoughts should be turned off at this time and remain off forever. Any negativity, hate, discouragement must remain completely stowed. In this unlikely event, we lose altitude while under pressure. Simply reach up and pull down a prayer. Prayers will automatically activate if you have faith. With faith, you will be able to assist another passenger. There is no baggage allowed on this flight. Now, captain of our faith has cleared us to take off. Our first destination is love, with continuous stops at peace and joy. Before you deplane, make sure you leave, you don't leave any of your hopes or dreams behind. Once these are lost, they cannot be reclaimed. If there's anything I or we can do to make your flight more enjoyable, please do the same by paying it forward. As I conclude, may you have a prosperous, wealthy, robust new year physically, mentally, and spiritually. God bless the city of Peak Skill and guess what? These United States of America.
Who likes being on this flight with Reverend Campbell? Thank you. Thank you to both of you for stepping up and speaking out. Well, it's that time of the meeting where we do our official business, what we're here to do. And it's time for the oath of office ceremony. And I would like to ask Mayor Vivian McKenzie to please approach and stand on the mark and to, if I could have the microphone come up. You have your Bible. That's you.
Hi, Vivian McKenzie. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of New York State. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of mayor of the city of Peak Skill, according to the best of my abilities. So I will tell everyone, we had to practice that, but my husband did a great job and I thank him very much. I want to say good morning and thank you all for being here today. I want to especially thank my family, who was always here for me, and if my family would stand up, because there's a lot of us here, but no matter when, where, or how, they are here in the back. From nine o'clock this morning in the kitchen to whenever I call and say, "Please," they're always here. So thank you so much, and thank you to my husband for always being there as my rock. I can't believe it was two years ago that I stood before you in this very same room and took my oath of office as mayor. Though the time has moved quickly, a lot has transpired over these two years. We started recovering from COVID, yet still find the effects it has had on our health, on our pockets and purses, on our emotions and mental status, and the toll it has taken on small businesses across the world. We've endured unprecedented events in our national politics and watched other countries at war, which has caused massive casualties and destruction. And we've seen horrific weather and fire events across the country and world that have altered the landscape for years to come. Yet through all of this, the city of Peak Skill has held its own. We have addressed food insecurities, helped our small businesses hold on through COVID, continue to provide services to our residents, completed projects, One Life 645 Main, which is an affordable housing project that should be the ideal for what affordable housing looks like and is an example of what can happen when private and public stakeholders work together. We've secured millions of dollars in grants, which will help restore our infrastructure, redo our parks, hire more firefighters, and provide programming for our youth, and so much more. We appointed our civilian complaint review board members, and we are training them as we speak. We have partnered with community stakeholders in our local and state government to bring additional services to our senior citizens and our at-risk youth. We've created a quality of life commission that meets weekly to address issues that some may think are small, but really matter to the quality of life of our residents and business owners here in the city. We know that our employees are our most important asset, and we have created and implemented employee appreciation and recognition programs. And we continue to support and provide events in our community that welcomes and includes everyone, no matter their race, gender, religion, or sexual preference. As Pastor said last night, we closed out 2023 and brought in 2024 with one of the largest crowds I've ever seen in our downtown, which means people want to be here, like it here, and are coming to Peak Skill. While many of the accomplishments that I've just mentioned were a part of this administration's initial goals set out in 2022, they would not have been reached without our city leadership, under Matt Alexander, our department heads, and our staff. And they would not have been, and our staff and department heads would not have been successful without our private stakeholders, our residents, our nonprofits, our business owners, and our state and county government. While Dana alluded to receiving lots of funding, she was remiss, she didn't say that she actually came here with a seminasty and brought us a $1.7 million check this year that is going to help us improve our parks and make them accessible for everyone, meaning no matter what your disability is, you'll be able to be in our parks. There are things like this that working in this city with this council, with our leadership, that have made the city of Peak Skill what it is, and I'm very proud of that. It is with pride and humility that I start my second term as your mayor. I thank you for your support and your trust to lead our city. I look forward to our future successes and overcoming any challenges we face. I look forward to working with each and every one of you to continue to make Peak Skill that diamond in the rough that becomes brighter and stronger as we work together to support one another, our city, and our community. Thank you for allowing me to continue to serve you.
Thank you, Mayor Vivian McKenzie. Deputy Mayor Patricia Riley and Councilwoman, would you please approach the podium and Kevin?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Patricia Riley.
I, Patricia Riley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Councilwoman.
The duties of Councilwoman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you, Jesus. Hi, everybody. It's such a pleasure to be here with everyone today. Thank you for coming out on New Year's Day. I know New Year's Day is always a rough one. People like to sleep in and do what they want to do. But we're happy to have you here with us today, celebrating this momentous occasion after our election. And before I start with my speech, I just want to say thank you to the PDCC for all they do to get us here. And it's really an honor and a privilege to be here. So I'm going to start a little bit with my speech. And the way I speak is I'll go off tangent a little bit, so you might not, I'll get back to myself. But you know how I am, Mayor, you know I am. Well, Happy New Year and thank you again for being here today. And thank you to Peak Skill for allowing me to serve this great city and its residents for the next four years. I would like to thank my mother Elsa, who is watching from home, and my father Patsy, who is no longer with us. They instilled in me a sense of community and hard work and civic duty. I want to give a shout out to my sister Anita, who's right there, and my brother Tony, who was always there for me with their support. And my husband Kevin. There he is. Everybody knows Kevin. Who was always my greatest cheerleader and supporter. I love you all. I also want to thank Mayor Vivian McKenzie and this entire city council and the entire Peak Skill city staff. It is an honor to continue to serve and to work together for the betterment of Peak Skill. It is truly an honor. Thank you. In my opening paragraph, I use the word "serve." You know, people always say to me, "Why do you do this? You know, why do you put yourself out there? So much criticism, there's so much this, there's so much that. Why do you do that?" Well, really, I have no choice. A public servant is a call. It's something that brings you to it. If you have to think about it, then it's not for you, right? And this room right here is made up of public servants. We're surrounded by public servants. So I had that in me from, I think, from when I was a younger kid and all the way up to now. So I can't explain it. So if somebody asks me, I just say, "It's something I really love and I can't stop being a public servant." It's something that's in me, it's innate in me, and it will be here until the day I die. So I wanted bringing a couple of words. So the word "serve" means the action of helping and doing for others. I was an educator for 32-plus years, so as an educator for many years, I served many students. As an elected official, my job is to serve all the residents in this great city of ours to the best of my ability. That's what a public servant does. You don't always have to agree, but as any public service role, sometimes it comes with slings and arrows, and that's okay. But we have to learn to navigate that. As elected officials, we are here to serve everyone. Even people who didn't vote for us, that's the job. You're a public servant. And you need to navigate that, you need to do it, and there's no ego involved. You just work. That's a true public servant. We as electors must always stay focused on why we're serving, the reason to serve. We must always listen in community. We must always listen and talk to each other and able to find some common ground and sometimes agree to disagree. That's okay. As long as you do it with respect. I was always taught that. Be respectful. Here's a small quote. It says, "We make a living by what we get. We make a life by what we give." And that is a true public servant. Another word that comes to mind, being a public servant, is a word "integrity." Integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles. I was raised to have integrity and to do my job, whatever it was, with integrity. I educated multitude of students that came through my classroom doors year after year, or now my position as on the city council, serving the residents of Peak Skill. Integrity of a public servant is essential. Whether you have, and if you don't have it, it's like your faith. If you don't have it, you don't have a center. You lose that moral compass. And as public servants, you need to have a moral compass. You need to have integrity. We see far too often that a person without integrity might be around for a while. You just look at the news every day and you can see a lot of things going on, but eventually it will catch up with that. I like this quote that I came up with for integrity that I found. "It is true that integrity alone won't make you a leader, but without integrity, you will never be one." And amen to that. That's deep. Another word I feel is important as a public servant is experience. And sometimes people go, "Well, you know, it doesn't really matter." Yeah, it does. In my opinion, it really does, because just think about it. Whatever your career is, whatever you did for a living, whatever you're doing for a living, the more you do it, the better you get at it. I don't know about you, but if I go to my doctor, I want somebody that's, you know, has done that surgery already. I want somebody that, you know, what you have to do, you have to know. If they're a teacher, I want somebody that's, you know, a first-year teacher is great, because we've all been there. You know, we've been that first year. But the more you hone your craft, the better you get at it. And I feel that in public service, it really helps, the more you've done it, the more you know people, the more you can know what to look for, what to happen, what the city needs, what your town needs, who to go talk to. It just, it just works. So I really believe that the community can prosper from your skills of experience. So experience to me is important, too. Those were some words that come to me as a public sermon. But in 2024, Peak Skill is on an upward trajectory. We're moving up. As you can see, people that were around last night, there were hundreds of people in downtown Peaks last night having a ball, literally, having a ball. Having the New Year's Eve ball drop is phenomenal. People were there. People were at our restaurants, people were at the Paramount having a concert. People just came out to enjoy the event. And one lady last night came up to our Councilwoman Talbot and said, "I lived in Peak Skill before," and she "I lived in Peekskill before," and she moved away for a while, and she came back last night, she goes, "You are all doing a great job. This is what Peekskill is. Peekskill is this. Peekskill is family, Peekskill is friends, Peekskill is just phenomenal." So hey, hey to that. So there's a lot of things happening this year. Our downtown revitalization initiatives are coming to fruition. You'll be seeing a lot of that happening, which all around has been working hard. Fleishman Pier will be completed. We're renovating parks and fields so our residents can enjoy all that Peekskill has to offer. Continue working on quality of life issues so our day-to-day experiences will be even better. Working with our seniors, hi seniors, my seniors back there, a lot of them are here today. Love you all. Working with our seniors, working with our veterans, our American Legion. Making sure that our seniors and our veterans can call Peekskill home for as long as they want to call it home for, that we give them everything to need for their best, best life in Peekskill. Our youth partnering with our schools. Dr. Maurizio is here, superintendent of schools. The city partners with our schools because when you have strong schools, it makes for a strong city. That's just a no-brainer right there. We have to invest in our youth. The schools partnering with our city, we're doing, talking about labor, the unions. I was brought up in a union household. Folks see, thank you, Grand Michelle. Unions are important in today's world. We want to make sure people are treated fairly. We want to make sure people have a living wage. We want to make sure they have 40-hour work weeks. All that was brought to you by your union. So we want to keep that going. We also want to train and, and, and talk to our students, because some of our students may not want to go to college. You know, the push is going to college, that's great if you want to go. But we need plumbers, we need electricians, we need carpenters, we need the skilled trades. So our school district has been, we incorporated trades and college fairs now for like the last four years and is getting bigger and bigger. Dr. Mauricio, thank you for doing that and partnering with us. Fantastic. We have a lot of great city services in our, in our city. I want to just shout out really briefly, really quick, thanking our DPW, our police department, our fire department, and all the volunteers, our Office of Emergency Management, our ambulance corps, border department, all our city services. We are so lucky in Peekskill, we have great city services. Somebody's picking up your garbage, somebody's cleaning your snow. They're working hard. They're people like you and me doing their job every day. Let's give them a round of applause. All our civic organizations, so many to mention. I'm going to mention our wonderful NAACP, our wonderful Rotary. The Rotary was out every day at the holiday time, ringing bells for the Salvation Army. I saw them everywhere and people were putting money in the little red pots, and they do service in the city of Peekskill, so shout out to them. We have great multitude of great community service in the city of Peekskill. That's what Peekskill is about. There's a sign when you come up on Route 9, Peekskill is a friendly town? Well, it certainly is a friendly town. They, they do a wonderful, wonderful job here. In closing, I thank you again, Peekskill, for allowing me to serve you. I will continue to, to work for you with integrity, hard work, experience, and drive to keep Peekskill moving forward. Let's continue to work together. It doesn't matter where you come from, what country you lived in, what city you're from, the color of your skin, or who you love. We are all one, we are Peekskill, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riley. Councilwoman Kathleen Talbot, would you please approach the podium? And Judge Johnson?
You too. Yes, I do. There you go. I Kathleen Talbot.
Do solemnly swear.
Uh, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Counselperson of the City of Peekskill.
Counselperson of the City of Peekskill.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you. Good mor, good afternoon. It's now afternoon on our first day of 2024. I'm very excited to be here, and I also want to thank each and every one of you for coming out for this event. I really appreciate it, and I know we all appreciate the support. I want to thank my family, first of all. I love each and every one of you, and I am so delighted that you're all here. Thank you. Without you guys, I wouldn't be standing here, I'm telling you that. So I'm starting my fourth term. Unbelievable that I'm here at this time. It's been, Mary Foster's back there, she knows when I started, at 2011, '12. So here we are going on for another four, signed up for another four years. Because I love the city. I love Peekskill. I was born here, my father and grandfather were born here. So I, I really have very deep roots in Peekskill. The only one in my family that stayed in Peekskill. And, and I think it's the best place to live, and it's the most beautiful place in the Hudson Valley, in my opinion. Right? I've seen such growth in Peekskill during the time that I've been on the council. In the beginning, it was, we were struggling out of the 2009, 2010 recession. It was very hard. We managed through Mary Foster and others, and the council tried to keep it afloat, tried to keep going, pushing forward through the hard times, and we did succeed. And I think now people are starting to see how wonderful Peekskill is. It, it's blooming, where I feel like we're in the golden age, I've said that before. And things are happening. People have mentioned before, I won't restate, but the mayor said about the grants that we're getting and all of that. Come on, you know, people are just throwing million dollars around, you know, that's okay with me. Although I will admit that I don't think a million goes nearly as far as it once did. I can't believe I'm saying that, but I am. So we, we've had a lot of support from our state and county and federal. We've really been supported in this, and I think that we have many things planned going forward. You're going to start to see a lot of the changes. People always ask me, so tell me, you know, they want like five updates on five major projects. It's all happening, and it really is happening. We're going to have the Fleishman's Pier is coming online. You can see that the upgrades happening in Pugsley Park and, as the mayor mentioned, the playgrounds and all of that sort of thing. And, you know, one of the biggest things in Peekskill, I think, is, that I see, is the level of professionalism and energy that our staff is bringing to Peekskill, led by Matt Alexander, who I think is fantastic. And he has, he is developing an incredible team, and he works with them and supports them and pulls them together for regular meetings, so everybody knows what's going on. Everybody has a chance to contribute and all of that. And that is so important to have everybody feeling good about the work that they're doing and feel like they're contributing, right? So, so that's something that's really important. I just want to say, and I'm keeping this quite short, that as Peekskill continues to change and grow, we have to embrace the new people that are coming in, while at the same time keeping our arms around the people who have been here for a long time, and especially people who don't have all the means that maybe others have. So we have to, we have to make sure we, we encompass everyone. And it's challenging, but I think it's doable. I think we can do that very easily. So as we continue to do that, Peekskill, they are all our future. You know, that combination is our future. So we really have to make sure that we bring everyone along and make sure that we try to address the needs, which may be disparate at some point. So that's, that's our challenge to do going forward. I, I will happily restate something that Pat alluded to last night. I had some woman beckoning me off the stage in the ball drop, and she was like, come on. And, you know, you never know, I think, okay, she's got a problem. There's something, there's something wrong. And I go up to her and she said, "I just want to tell you that I'm a lifelong, I was a lifelong resident of Peekskill. I lived upstate for a long, I live upstate now, and I'm back here for tonight, and I just want to tell you what a fantastic job you guys are doing." What a nice thing to hear. I mean, it really, really was. And I said, "Well, thank you." You know, as smiling, I was very pleased by that. Anyway, so I, I just want to wish everybody here a very Happy New Year and enjoy all the changes that 2024 will bring. And please don't forget to think about volunteering. Some of our boards are very active. I want to, I shout out to our Conservation Advisory Council Chair Elaine and Elaine Kikoma and Kay Barthmanis and Lisa Brown and others who are really doing a phenomenal job of getting, moving Peekskill forward on the environmental front. I'm the liaison to that group and I, I couldn't be happier. And the Paramount Theater, I just shout out to the Paramount Theater. Paramount Theater came back, I just will say that the Paramount Theater came back from two years, two-plus years of being shut. And you know how hard that was to keep that whole thing rolling during that whole time? And then to get it back up and running and, you know, this one doesn't like that kind of program, and that one doesn't like this kind of program, you know, it, but now it's, it's happy to say they've had several in the last week or two, they had several sold-out shows. So go to the Paramount. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Talbot. Next, I would like to ask Councilman Brian Facet to approach the podium.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Brian Facet, do solemnly swear.
I Brian Facet, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Councilman for the City of Peekskill.
Councilman for the City of Peekskill.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Good afternoon, elected officials, friends, family, and people of Peekskill, Peekskill. How grateful I am to be here today. As many of you know, before I was appointed to Peekskill City Council, I had the privilege of serving as the president of the Business Improvement District for four years. During this time, I led another community board of directors and formed Peekskill Pride, a nonprofit organization committed to supporting the LGBTQ+ community in our area. In 2022, I was honored to be appointed to the role of council member following Vivian McKenzie's historic election as the first female African-American mayor in the city of Peekskill's history. A significant milestone for our community. And by taking this oath of office today, I too reach a new milestone and renew my commitment to serving the residents of Peekskill with honesty, compassion, and respect. To Councilmembers Scott Fernandez and Douglas, it has been an honor to serve with you these past two years, and I am grateful to have the opportunity to collaborate with three exceptional women on this council. Mayor Vivian McKenzie, Deputy Mayor Patricia Riley, and Councilwoman Kathy Talbot, who are among the finest leaders in city government. And together, we will continue to work towards improving the lives of Peekskill residents. Unlike many of my colleagues on this council, I did not grow up in the city of Peekskill. However, my attraction to Peekskill was strong from the moment I first visited this Hudson River City eight years ago. My partner, now husband and I, were searching for a place to move our business and settle our lives. A place where we could be who we are amongst the diversity we felt comfortable in. We searched for the better part of three years, so deciding on a place to be our place did not come easy. We first became enamored with the historic Main Street building that we purchased and quickly fell in love with the people of this city. Peekskill immediately felt like home, and we never looked back. Having been on this council two years, I have learned much more about this beautiful city and the people who passionately call this place home. I have learned that our city staff, our police, our firefighters, our DPW workers, our blue-collar workers and our white-collar workers give their all to keep this city running. I want to thank Matt Alexander for his steadfast leadership as our city manager. As you know, politics is a revolving door. And for the moment, that door has stopped revolving with this current council. It speaks volumes that yet you have put your faith in us yet again. But we must remember, there are moments that came before us, and there are moments that will come after us. But for this moment, the city of Peekskill is in our hands. Following this inauguration, the council has a responsibility to enact and approve legislation while serving as considerate leaders and caretakers of public funds. It is not only our duty to implement policies and protocols that enhance the efficiency and efficacy of municipal services, but also our responsibility to demonstrate to the world what Peekskill is capable of achieving now and for generations to come. I am proud to be part of this inclusive community that is Peekskill, and this council will continue to ensure that it is foremost in our minds as we build upon the Renaissance that is upon us. I want to thank the people in my life who have listened without judgment, spoken without prejudice, helped without entitlement, and loved without conditions. I thank my husband for swearing me in today, for being by my side for 24 years, and for teaching me every day what partnership is. I am honored to also have my beautiful family here today. My sister Michelle and her wife Lori, my niece Jessica, who just completed her studies at Bridgewater State University, and will graduate summa cum laude and move on to grad school. My 19-year-old nephew Jake, who just spent 18 weeks studying in Europe and knocking his grade point out of the park. Although they don't live here in Peekskill, I know they are proud of the work that we are all doing. Having lost our matriarch, our mom, our grandmother this past October, we understand how important family and roots truly are. I could not be more proud of them, and I know my mom is smiling today. I humbly thank you all for trusting in me, and I will continue to cherish these moments to the best of my abilities and make sure Peekskill continues to rise. I wish you all a happy and healthy New Year.
So this concludes the, the part of the legislative and executive branch of government. And next, we will move towards the judicial branch of local government. I would like to invite the honorable. I would like to invite the Honorable Judge Johnson to the podium.
I, read your name.
I, Reginald J. Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
City of Peak Skill Judge.
City of Peak Skill Judge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you, babe. Good afternoon, City of Peak Skill. So many people here who have supported me over the 10 years and so many people to name. I see Pastor John here, thank you so much. Faith Bible is here, I haven't seen Pastor Perry, but MOBC is in the house and certainly acknowledge them. So to say good mornings really after a good afternoon at this point. Over 10 years, it's been a while, it's a decade and so much has gone on since that time. And judges don't get a chance to talk very often like politicians, so I'm going to go about this just a little bit, so bear with me. But over 10 years, I have a story to tell and to be very simply put this way, to God Almighty and to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I give you all the praise and all the honor and the glory both now and forever. And so whatever the circumstances, God be magnified. To my beautiful, faithful, loving companion and prayer warrior partner. My beautiful wife Pam, thank you for your love, your patience, your prayers, tears, strength and faith in me and us over 32 years of our marriage. Brian, I got you beat. I got you beat, Brian. Sep, I got you beat. The Bible says that a man that finds a wife finds a good thing. And when God led me to you, he led me to someone that words simply could not describe. I, I could not imagine living life with anyone else. We've been through a lot, but if we stay together and we walk in purpose, no weapon, no weapon. To my beautiful daughters and my beautiful loving daughters, I say to you in public what I say to you in private, and that is that I love you so much and I'm so proud of you and honored to be your father. I pray for you every day and I pray that out of all the things you could be, that you'd be kind, patient, generous, honest and willing to walk in the purpose that God has for your life. To my dear friend, my mentor, my big sister, oh my God, Mayor Vivian McKenzie. Thank you for your friendship, your love, your support over all of these years. Thank you. Thank you for leading the City of Peak Skill into this period of almost a renaissance. We've heard it before with all the economic development and there is greater inclusion. Peak Skill is attracting people from near and far and that's because of your leadership and the leadership of this wonderful council. Thank you so much. And congratulations on your reelection. I have other words to say, you know how I feel about you and Eric, words that be between us. To the common council, this wonderful council, Deputy Mayor Patricia Pat Riley, congratulations on your reelection and thank you so much for being a friend over the years. Councilman Ramon Fernandez, my buddy, thank you. Councilman Kathy Talbot, Kathy, words over the years, I love you. Congratulations on your reelection. Councilman Dwight Douglas, thank you so as well, be of support. And Mr. Brian Facet, what can I say, Brian? You're amazing. Congratulations to you on your reelection. And thank you for the council collectively for your support over the years and your friendship over the years. And thank you for your collective wisdom and stewardship over the city. I see, we see, beautiful progress, continue the work. And to our city manager, Matthew Alexander, Matt, wonderful Matt. Thank you for all that you do to keep the city operational and healthy. Other cities would fight to have a city manager like you and we're lucky to have you. Thank you. In closing, it is my privilege and honor to be supported by the common council for a second term. Thank you for your confidence in me. Over the past 10 years, I've had the privilege to marry some people, I don't know, still married, to preside over graduation ceremonies of others from drug court, to utilize incarceration as a last resort. And to keep as many tenants in their homes stayed from eviction, that you don't have to be evicted the way you used to be, that you have a chance to stay in your home and to live the Peak Skill experience. If you live in Peak Skill, you have the right to stay in Peak Skill if you can. I intend to continue this practice and it is important for everyone having business before the court to know that they will be treated with respect, impartiality, patience and compassion. Thank you, City of Peak Skill, so much.
This is a good, good plane trip, right? So congratulations are in order for the mayor, the council and our judge. Congratulations to all of you. This is an appropriate moment to take a pause and to thank somebody who has been instrumental in putting this together and that is not me, that is my assistant, Stephanie Romero. Stephanie is the background, the glue, the mojo, the thing that keeps everything running and we appreciate you and thank you for all that you've done for the city. It seems like two years ago, I was here with Cassandra Rett and we were running around doing the same thing. And, you know, I, I just want to take that moment to say, the city is very interested in making a team and making sure that team members understand that they are valuable and that there is a place to move up. And Cassandra filled that role when she moved up to the city clerk. I also would like to thank team member number one, Malika Garrett, who is always able to help and always out there and always has a good smile on her face.
Thank you.
Malika is the unofficial ambassador to the City of Peak Skill and we really appreciate all you bring to the city. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Bria, the artist, if you could approach and I will need the mic, Sep, if you could bring that up. We're going to use two mics. And I think, Bria, would you prefer to use that free?
So before I sing this song, can everybody hear me? Before I sing this song, I just want to thank you all for having me here. It's an honor. Mayor Vivian McKenzie, congratulations, congratulations to you all. And I was just reflecting as I sat back down, the last time I sang the national anthem publicly was my high school graduation, Peace School High School in 2011. So full circle. So the song I'm going to sing for you guys today is fitting. As I was mentioning earlier, we have to be agents of change and I believe a positive change is going to come, especially to Peak Skill. Technical difficulties. Thank you, Peak Skill.
Well, that is Peak Skill. Thank you, thank you, Bria, the artist, for a just wonderful entertainment and wonderful homage to our city mayor, council and our judge. We thank you. Do I have Reverend Perry in the house?
I, I have learned that Reverend Perry is everywhere and I run into Reverend Perry very often and. Thank you. He, he didn't tell me what I was supposed to do. He just asked if I was here. And I, and I know he thinks I can read these little point seven things here, but I believe the mayor told me what I should do. Good morning, everyone, good afternoon. It is a pleasure to be here. I ran behind schedule because of some family situations, but all is well. Sometimes you just have to take a moment when you get a phone call. So I am delighted to be here. Thank you to our mayor and to all that sit over here. Congratulations for another, another wonderful round to all the dignitaries and everyone that is here, as I hasten to catch my breath from that long distance of that seat over there, showing my age. First I say Happy New Year. And one of the things I've been charged with is a benediction, which is really a closing blessing and sending. But what I love about the fact that it's doing this is that it's ascending not into nowhere and ascending into separation, but it's ascending into unity. It is a blessing to be able to say what Peak Skill has in this surrounding area has, is and prayerfully will always be a community that stands together, a community that thrives together, that even when we disagree, we are disagreeing only because we want to be together, not because we're trying to succeed and separate. And so for these brief few minutes, as I stand here as the senior pastor of the Mount Olivet Baptist Church and the president of Papa, just indulge me for a minute as we get ready to move even further on and upward and maybe from this space, but not from each other and certainly not from the cause. Amen? We come before you today as we have been all of you. You've been invoked into this space, O Holy One, that is not only the giver, but the sustainer of life, of unity, of humanity. We've come here by your call, whether it was a call through a person or a move by your spirit or just what you laid into us from time ago. We come here today to come onto once again, one harmonious accord. You've given me the word to say harmonious, not because we will always all sing the same note or the same key or do the same modulation, but when it comes together, it will be pleasing in thine eyes and ears and it shall be a reckoning unto each of our souls so that we know that when the change comes, it comes for our good. And so no matter where we go, no matter what we do, as we said faithfully last night, no matter where we go, don't go there without us. Put your holiness and your righteousness upon us by whichever way we call upon you so that we know that we do not do this journey alone, but with our natural, there is a supernatural divineness that will take us further and let all those around us look and say, whatever they do, we want to be part of it and do it too. Let us be an example and an end sample, not only as individuals, but as a collective and as a community. Turn your face and let it shine upon us. Be where it is that we seek to go, but walk with us as we get there and remain after we leave, for we not go on our own of our own accord. But I thank you that you have said that even let us come and reason together because it is good when we dwell together in unity and we do not just coexist, we dwell, we stay together, we walk together, we pray together, we fight together, we sing together, we strive together, we grow together and we will overcome together. We will have our justice, we will have our fairness, but mostly we will have each other's love, respect and honor. So right now, as we go down from this place, but never from your presence, because your presence is everywhere, where we fail to be, you are still there waiting for us to show up. Cause your spirit and your face to be before us, be on us and be with us. And let us all say in the name that was given to us. Amen, amen and amen.
Thank you, thank you, Reverend Perry. So at this time, we can call the meeting to order, Mayor.
Time to call the meeting to order? Okay.
Okay. Madam clerk, I'm gonna ask that you do a roll call. Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilman Facet, Councilman Scott, Councilman Douglas, Councilman Fernandez, Councilwoman Talbot, Deputy Mayor Riley, and Mayor McKenzie. At this time, we'll move on to new business. Okay. Resolution one, please, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Mayor. I move to accept Resolution J. 1 as presented. This resolution is designating the official newspaper of the city of Peak Skill. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, Resolution J. 1 unanimously carries. Resolution J. 2, please, Councilwoman Talbot.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution J. 2 as presented.
Second.
This resolution designates the official banks of the city of Peak Skill for 2024. Mayor?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, Resolution J. 2 unanimously carries. Resolution, J. 2, I'm sorry, ma'am? The addition was done to Resolution J. 2?
The addition is ready. Michael.
For J. 1, I'm sorry. Just add that into the record.
Official paper of the city of Peak Skill. And we will also include the language quotes, "Peak Skill will continue using the Westchester Hispanic as a supplemental newspaper, as it has done for the past several years."
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Resolution J. 3, please, Councilman Fernandez.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we assess the Resolution J. 3 as presented. This resolution designates Councilwoman Patricia Riley as Deputy Mayor and the lead of the Order of Present for council members. Resolve the party rules and proceed to the council member to serve a major in the event absence of emergencies. Councilwoman Kathy Talbot, Councilman Ramon Fernandez, Councilman Dwight Douglas, Councilman Robert Scott, and Councilman Brian Facet. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, Resolution J. 3 unanimously carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the conclusion of our first organizational meeting for 2024.
Yes, so I would just, did we get the roll call? So you did, okay. And I would also like to say, you know, that many times there are times when we don't get to say everything we need to say, and I've been guilty of that today a couple of times, and it's with a large group. I understand Judge Johnson would also like to address.
I know this is a bit unusual. I got a little emotional as I was up here, so forgive me for that. Councilman Rob Scott. Oh, no. Oh, I saw it. And so please charge it to the head and not the heart. You and I have been friends for years. Before I became a judge, before you went to the council, you and I, we met in a group, and I got to know you and have known you since then, and I adore you and your family. So please forgive me for the oversight. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, now we're ready.
At this time, we're going, I'm gonna ask for an adjournment, but I would like to invite everyone to please stay for refreshments that are in the back. Mingo, wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you all for being here, and we in the council look forward to serving you for the years to come. And happy Kwanzaa. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Matt. No, wait a second. And I want to wish everybody a happy Kwanzaa. All right? May I have a motion to adjourn, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Boy, you guys are rushing it. All right, all right. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.
I would just also like to say a big thank you to Mike Minor.